Looks like all are present. Moving to 1.03, adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Ms. Vanessa Enriquez-Klebuk?
Yes.
Ms. Felice Glover-Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Degarden?
Yes.
Ms. Jennifer Lones?
Yes.
Dr. Brandtons?
Yes.
And I ask for a vote yes. Moving to 1.04, pledge of allegiance. We'll go ahead and stand up here and let's start the pledge of allegiance.
I give up the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to 1.05, school of the month. Rittner High School is school of the month for the month of October. Come on up. Good evening, welcome.
Yes, thank you for having us. Appreciate the opportunity. This opportunity tonight, we're going to talk about some of the things with the athletics and activities and the kind of extracurricular stuff that we're excited about that's been going on. As always, we align with our vision and our mission for the school district. The equity statement really holds true also with our sponsors and coaches. As the district have shifted to this, we've made it a point to go ahead and make sure that all our coaches are on board with what the district is doing. Real quick, just an overview. We're going to talk a little bit about the academics, the communication, department leadership, some opportunities that we've had over the last year or so, department leaderships, and then we're going to get to like the kids, and then really the moments that we've been lucky enough to witness over the last year or two.
You know, as the district emphasizes victory in the classroom, we've been challenging our programs to victory all around. Simply stated, to be our best at all things, at all times, on and off the field. Our goal is to raise the level of excellence with each day and with a return to normal after COVID, success is really starting to materialize. This culmination has come to fruition through multiple stakeholders across all levels. We as a department have been afforded this opportunity through the district to support growth amongst our students and our coaches. A new foundation of success is now becoming a reality. As we look at victory all around, we look for a change in culture. This has happened. There's a whole motto that sports build character. Well, our sports at Rittner High School are starting to reveal our character. This is just the beginning, as we see more success on and off the field, within our community, in the building, and in our classrooms. Alumni are coming back, and our athletes are now becoming the leaders we need while realizing their own potential. This district is not just a school, but a community resource for all, and co-curricular extensions such as athletics and activities are the original wraparound service. With your help, we've been able to give our kids an opportunity to be a part of something bigger than themselves, and more and more kids want to be a part of this journey with each and every day. Most importantly, the success and unity amongst teammates heightens our expectations to help us leverage the district's goal of victory in the classroom. Participation is on the rise, and our community is also starting to rally, showing up with higher game attendance and digital engagement rates each and every week. Not just students, but parents, community members, and most importantly, alumni. Enhancements to our digital platform such as new graphic software, Huddle Focus, YouTube and streaming capabilities have all helped us reach new peaks within our connection to Husky Nation. With that being said, I can genuinely say it's a great time to be Husky.
What the athletics and activities has done for the academic side, we know that we have MSHA requirements to participate in anything, passing the six classes the previous semester. We now have an academic tracking system thanks to our IT department and really some staff that has left, but set the groundwork in that. Currently, our academic sport is in full swing, two days a week where they get an opportunity. We've expanded that, and that is open to anybody that needs help, not necessarily an athlete or anybody that's into the activities, but that has grown. We've got a great team of teachers that spend the time, you know, working with the kids and staying on them. My hats off to Danielle Swallow, leads that charge at the high school, and she has really taken off with that. So that is, over the last year, we've had record lows of losing kids to ineligibility. We mostly see that at the semester with our winter sports, and last year was by far the best year in my tenure here of the kids that weren't eligible the second semester. I believe it was only two out of all of the kids that were participating in winter sports.
You know, about four years ago, Drew and I were in here giving some presentations about the website and ways we were going to enhance communication with our community. You know, I think that's only continued to grow, and especially with a return to normal, you're starting to see that on the digital engagement side of things. The website platform in which we use, we're continually ranked at the very top, and we're continually ranked top nationally for those that use the same platform, and that is a platform only for high schools, high school athletic and activity departments. As some of you know, we have the other backdrops of social media, Black Vortex, Boobler Classroom. You know, something that I'm really, really excited about that's new this year is our Huddle Focus, which maybe some of you guys have noticed, the streaming of football games and now the streaming of volleyball games in the Castle Fieldhouse. We'll continue streaming games this winter for boys and girls basketball along with co-ed wrestling, and then boys volleyball in the spring, all in the gym, and I think that's just brought a lot of notoriety to our kids and helped people at home with busy schedules be able to connect to what's going on if they can't make it to the game. And the last thing is, I think other people are starting to take notice of what's going on, as KSCK has been out here twice already to do before-school morning pep rallies, and that's just, I think, recognition that people within the community are really starting to take notice of who we are and what we do.
The department leadership, the last year, I had taken on the role as president of the suburban conference, which oversees 31 schools in the suburban league. Lee is the secretary, pushing out information, really changing the culture of the entire suburban, looked at, we took on that role to kind of piggyback off the success that we've been having, and I really feel that Rittner has looked at much different than it has been in the past as far as what our role is in the academic and the athletic success of the entire suburban conference. We also taken on the, we do the scheduling for the entire suburban conference after the rules are set, and so that has really given us a greater voice at the table, and also we still meet with a representation from mid to north county ADs to make sure that our needs are being met in the general scheme of things across the St. Louis area. Obviously, we know that, you know, down south and west, they just have different needs, so we basically have a seat at the table now, and we feel like we're really, really making strides on making sure that we're represented, but also our region is represented.
Here we kind of had just some of the numbers and breakdown, you know, as I mentioned before, a return to normal, you know, the number of our fall athletes is right around that 200 mark. We have some comparative data from the previous couple of years, and you can see that drop when COVID hit, dropping us down to 140 and then 186. We also kind of, we also broke that down into male and female, and we've had a great growth of our female athletes coming back. The last thing is the coach-to-athlete ratio, you know, and there's usually about a 10% loss of students that start the season and maybe don't make it all the way through. So that's why if you look at 22 in a 1 to 10 with a 200, that's not quite the ratio, but if you look at the kids that start the season, certainly is. Clubs are off to a really good start too, but they really don't be going until about after Labor Day, and with the later start of school, when by the time we put this presentation together, there's not too much to report on, but they are off to a great start, and utilization of Husky time with the May block schedule is a huge win for some of our club sponsors to connect with those students.
The standout moments we've had, which have been many in the short time that this school year's been going, like Lee said, twice KSCK has requested to come out, and that is a direct reflection on the first time when they suggested that we come out starting at 5:00 a.m., we were kind of taken aback, saying, I don't know how this will work. I showed up at about 4:45, and there was already 30 kids waiting to join the pep rally, and it was very overwhelming. It was a great, great morning. They asked to come back, and once again, we're very well representative with our different clubs and different sports. Some of the things that are, we listed here, just some of the highlight wins. Softball's had a really good season, some really, really key wins against opponents that we have not beaten in quite some time. Boys swim and girls golf, also girls golf is growing, 11 golfers is the most that I've had in my tenures here. And then football, hopefully we're all paying attention that we're actually, that Coach Kirsey is doing great things for the kids and really getting everybody on the same page. As a result, we were able to highlight Jane Barnett as a St. Louis athlete of the week through the Post, and our football team, being invited to go down to University of Missouri for that, to be on the college campus, which we are really highlighting this year, trying to get our kids to go to college campuses, to watch college games, to take tours and stuff like that. Our coaches are really latching on to that, and we're trying to provide the resources to do that, so it's been, it's been a good, it's been a good start for the year.
You know, in closing, there's two links that we provided, we put out on the website, and one of them packed a lot of information, which I provided here at the beginning of this meeting, and then the second one is really the standout moments, and we kind of go down, what Drew just went over was just a short brief overview of some of the things, but I mean, it is across the board, and if you talk to people within the St. Louis community, they're very excited to see this sleeping giant awake, because there are so many things that this school is ready to offer, and we're right on the precipice of doing so. So thank you for your time, and I-
What opportunities are you seeing with the new marquee at the high school? What kind of feedback are you getting? How are you seeing it as a tool to support communication?
So I did, go ahead. Yeah, I've had several people, you know, say that it's great just to see something up there and some information going on, and try to let us, let you know when the big games are coming, and, you know, and got kind of a late start on it, but I think the, it's just another reach that we can get to the communication of what's going on in the high school. Right now, it's, it has been mostly athletics, but then I can see it turning into just a poster board for whatever's going on in the district, you know, highlighting what's the stuff, the good stuff that's going on at the high school.
So about percentage-wise, about how many students are participating in athletics and extracurricular and such?
Throughout the entire year, it, it's usually around about 500 that are in, so about 25% of the kids are involved in something extracurricular. Like I said, we have, the numbers that we have right there were just for athletics, because like I said, our clubs really haven't all gotten going yet, but there, it's about 500 each year that do that.
So question regarding, you have the equity statements up there to start the presentation. What does that look like as far as the YouTube streaming? I know we talked about a couple of different sports, but that didn't see any income for some of the activities that we have. Is that the goal when you're talking about the YouTube streaming, or is it just-
Yes, absolutely. So through this, through this platform, we are linked to our YouTube channel, and then right now, we have limited capabilities on YouTube. Once, and we're very close, I've checked it this week, but once we hit 1,000 subscribers, then we can live stream to YouTube through iPads, which would then in turn will allow us to take it into the auditorium, live stream anything that's going on in the auditorium or any other groups that have mobile devices that can do that, which will carry over even into some of our athletic fields that do not, you can't have a stationary camera, but then it's also just any presentations or anything that we're doing in the lower locker or auditorium, we're going to be able to live stream it.
So if I'm understanding correctly, it's about the number of subscribers?
Yes.
So is there opportunity where we should be marketing that out to us as a community or board members so we get more subscribers?
Yeah, and we have, and we've posted quite a few posts, you know, we want you, we want you to join, we need you to join, and here's why, on the website and on social media platforms. And the one difference to understand is that Huddle Focus cameras are fixed cameras, so the one is out on more field and the other one is at Costco. The inquiry we've instantly made was, you know, can we get one of these in the auditorium? Right now, that's not a service in which the company provides because of the calibration needed on stage as compared to a sports field where they use the lines to calibrate. So that's why the big, the big number of 1,000 subscribers to get to allows us more capability to reach more students across the board.
You know how many subscribers we currently have?
Last time I looked, we were 911. 918.
If you have not subscribed-
Turn around and look at the camera right there.
We're close, yes. We're close.
Use this space as your marketing.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I wanted to comment about the positive feedback that I've heard about the support that other teams are giving to other teams, whether it was the football teams, or just all across the board. I think that that would be wonderful, even with cases like golf where they're not necessarily on campus, because a lot of times there's a lot of questions of what that even is like in terms of being competitive sport. So I certainly appreciate when other teammates are supporting other teams.
Yeah, absolutely. It has been very high energy, and like I said, the football players are out there watching the softball games, and as soon as that's done, they're usually going in and watching the varsity volleyball games, and it's been, it's been really nice to see them root for each other, and success has been the outcome.
And one other thing is, in those standout moments that's posted on the website, is that officials have taken notice of that too. So, you know, our first, our first home game versus Pattonville, and then our homecoming game, we both got positive MSHA reports from those officials, just, you know, reaching out and just being very complimentary to our coaching staff, our kids on the field during play, and their hospitality while here on campus.
Speaking of your coaching staff, they have done a phenomenal job this year, like putting out stories and recaps of everything. I just, I appreciate that so much because it wasn't as much in the past, and we see a lot of it now.
Well, that was our goal too. We're making that a priority, and we're, you know, we're setting the standard on, and I think it's, we've had some coaches that have done an outstanding job for years, and now we've kind of said, that's the bar, you know, and kind of make it a competition between the coaches, like if you don't do it, it is noticed, because then your feed is getting filled up with other sports, and, you know, so that is the, was the goal in all this year, is we'll put that at the forefront of communication.
There's been a lot of work on the backend of things to focus on structures to help our staff and our kids showcase awareness of this case.
Someone to also ask, like we do all of our training and everything, and not all of our coaches are Rittner employees per se, so they go through training too, correct?
Yeah, they're required, any training that a Rittner employee, you know, classroom teacher or staff member would have to do, in addition to all of the MSHA requirements and the training that they have to do for that. And that includes MSHAs, open it up, now they do suicide prevention, they do crisis intervention, they do concussion awareness in addition to the regular coaches test for their specific sport.
What we do is formulate a checklist and share that on Google Sheets with HR, just to kind of monitor the progress, because those MSHA and the vector in-house district trainings are just as important as one another, and that way it's a seamless transition on board those out-of-district coaches.
We are getting more, more in-house coaches, MSHA's in district. There's been, some new blood come in, and it's helped, and they can interact with the kids all day, and they go straight out to the field, so they have that leadership.
I do have one, sorry, one other question. What is the progress on creating theater activities or sports activities, either in regular extracurricular activities at the middle school? How is that feeding into our high school? I know we started some work, but-
Yeah, and we still do, it's limited, the staffing on that has been very hard, and then also the stakes at the middle schools, because they are doing their own after-school activities a lot, so we're not able to get in there till later in the day, which, which means that if the middle schooler is going to stay after, they'll have to sometimes even go home or do that after-school activity and then come back, and then it's giving the staff to, I can, you know, I would love to see it expand, and I think that is in our, our talks with, when we come budget time, to see what we can fund. There are some sports out there that are very low cost and we can do that, but then it's always, right now, we're facing the shortage of staffing on that level.
What are the sports that we offer right now in the middle school?
Right now, we have, we have basketball, and boys and girls, track, boys and girls, and then our coach, our football coaching staff has connected with the junior Huskies football and kind of revitalized that, so the opportunity is there for them.
And girls volleyball with Coach Ken.
Yes, yeah.
And so that's kind of the construct to understand what's being done at the middle school level, because there's a middle school league in which they participate in, and unfortunately, just at that middle school level, there aren't near the opportunities that there are at the high school level on the MSHA. So there are, you know, some hurdles there, and so what you've seen with some, being volleyball and football used as an example, you know, they go play, and it's a little bit more a private thing, it's not through the middle school. Those are, those are parents, community members that go there to do that.
Thank you. Excellent. Any other comments or questions? That'll be good.
Great, that was a great program.
Great job.
Thanks, thank you, appreciate your support.
You bet.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Next up, we have 1.06, report a closed session. The Board of Education met in closed session on September the 8th and 29th, 2022, for the purpose of a discussion of personnel agenda items. Moving to 1.07, we have one public comment. Ms. Debbie Weisler, if you'd come up, please.
Hello? I've been speaking at board meetings for two years now, and I've attended many return-to-learning meetings during that time as well. I had asked Dr. Kilbride for another return-to-learn meeting to remove all COVID restrictions from the district. Our meeting last week consisted of several staff from central office, teachers, and four parents. So for a district our size, this is a gross under-representation of parents on the committee, and what I learned after that meeting is that I've just begun to feel like my opinion doesn't really matter anyway, and they really haven't for the past two years. You can take a few moments during the meeting to voice your opinion, but in the end, Dr. Kilbride will present what he believes is the best decision to the board members. Teachers' voices and opinions have had a greater influence over parents in most of these meetings. Dr. Kilbride's solution from our meeting is to survey the committee, or, I'm sorry, his solution from the meeting last week is to survey the community. So what was the point of having our committee meeting? How much engagement will there be considering parents just finished filling out a survey? As a parent, we are overwhelmed with text messages, emails, and surveys from the district already. Tonight, I'm here advocating not only for my kids, but for parents who work and cannot be here, for families who don't even know that they have a voice in this way, and for students who don't like public speaking. I don't see any other parent here tonight advocating to keep these restrictions. I'm here, and I'm asking you to end them. I have a nursing degree, and I work in pediatrics. I know the effect that COVID does not have on kids physically, but the restrictions the past few years have caused a significant increase in mental health problems, again, something I've mentioned in most of my public comments and emails. Forcing a mask on a child can cause trauma and lead to social emotional problems, it can also create learning deficits. You cannot possibly know what is best for each child in this district, and as a parent, that is our decision to make. You can encourage healthy behaviors, but you cannot force a mask on kids' faces. The pandemic does not give you the power to take away our fundamental rights, and everyone in this district should be given a choice. That's all I've asked for since I started speaking at these meetings. Did you know that most districts in our area, I scrolled through website after website after website, and most all of them have ended their COVID restrictions in their schools? I will be honest here, my kids will never, ever wear a mask again, ever. If they have to lose two weeks of learning because of your unwillingness to end these restrictions, that's unfortunate. However, if other parents do the same, it will definitely affect Rittner's attendance during those two weeks. Let's just hope we never see the 2% positivity rate in one building. What I'm asking, do not approve the return-to-learning plan as presented tonight, end of restrictions. Another agenda item for tonight's meeting focuses on communication goals for board members, and it states the board members would like to be more engaged with their stakeholders and families and to connect with Rittner families and community members. I would strongly suggest that you start by answering your emails. I've sent numerous emails to board members asking questions that consistently go unanswered. The one board member who always responded and was definitely engaged with families in the community is no longer on this board. If you want to facilitate two-way communication, you have to answer emails from parents like me. Thank you.
And that was the only other public comment that I had. So then we can move to our reports. 2.01, the present. Tonight, I am excited to tell you about 2007 Rittner High School graduate, Stephen Cash. Steve has added another award to his illustrious list of honors. He was named to the United States Hockey Hall of Fame Class of 2022. Steve will take his place in the U.S. Hockey Hall of Fame on November the 30th, 2022, during a ceremony in St. Paul, Minnesota. For 16 seasons, Stephen was the top sled hockey goaltender in the world. During his illustrious career, he won three gold medals and one bronze medal and represented the United States in four Paralympic Winter Games. He has also played in eight world championships and has appeared in more than 150 games for the Team USA. He was inducted into the Rittner Hall of Fame in 2015 and was also the featured speaker at our 2015 Employee Convocation with Pro Football Hall of Fame member Isaac Bruce and the Build-A-Bear founder, Maxine Clark. Steve is among the most decorated sled hockey athlete of all time. He was named 2009 Paralympic Sportsman of the Year by the United States Olympic and Paralympic Committee. He was also a member of the Rittner Pride and Promise Foundation Board of Directors and continues to serve in an advisory role. We are so proud of Steve. Congratulations on his amazing honor. That concludes my reports, moving to 2.02, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Chris Kilbride.
Thank you, Dr. Alvin. So we have Ms. Melly with us tonight. Ms. Melly, would you please come up to the table here in front of the board, please?
So, board members, I'm excited to report that Christina Andrade-Melly, ELA teacher at Rittner High School, was selected by a committee of her peers and education partners across the state of Missouri as the 2023 Missouri Teacher of the Year. The surprise announcement that Dr. Haywood, who is here with us today, thanks Dr. Haywood for being in his face, that Dr. Haywood, along with Mr. Lones and Mr. LaScassi, that they coordinated, involved getting the senior class of Rittner High School into the auditorium for a graduation meeting in September, and that was the front for what was a surprise recognition for Ms. Melly. Dr. Van Deven was present, as were a number of other dignitaries from the region for the recognition. So Ms. Melly is the second state teacher of the year in our last five years here in Rittner. Beth Davy was the 2018 Teacher of the Year. In fact, we've had five teachers in the last nine years, five Rittner teachers in the last nine years named finalists for the state Teacher of the Year. Honor is unprecedented. Ms. Melly has spent her entire career in Rittner, starting off in Wyland, continuing through Rittner Middle, graduating from Rittner High School in 2006. This is her 11th year teaching at Rittner High School. It's an incredible honor to work with Ms. Melly as she serves in the role of- as she serves in the role of Missouri Teacher of the Year, as well as the president of the NEA. I can share that Ms. Melly is an enlightened leader who does hold us accountable, but I always appreciate our conversations. Ms. Melly is very deserving of this honor. Her unmatched positive attitude and her passion for serving every child has been recognized across the state, and even more people are going to see and learn of her vision for children. So, Ms. Melly, I wanted to give you the platform a little bit to share a couple of thoughts on the honor, and then you turn it back over.
Sure. Okay, well, I'm going to sit down. With the nice high jeans that I did not change out of. I think that what it is is still sinking in. It's sort of a thing that I said, well, let me see how far I can take Rittner. Let me see how far I can bring our name and give us a good showing, and here we are. And I have two essays to write to see if I can bring us up to the national level. So I'm hopeful that I can. Just the fact that we've had so many teachers in the last nine years, you said five have been finalists.
Five, correct.
I mean, that's not coincidence. I think that there's something in the water. And I think that what it is is just the respect and the engagement that we got from our community. The businesses in the area are really pulling for the school. Community members are really pulling for the school. We have families who are very involved. We have students from all different backgrounds, and that's something that I've not found anyplace else, not in our state and not anyplace else in the world so far as I can tell from the people I've spoken to. So I just think that we've got something incredibly special here, and I'm so appreciative of it. I'm really proud to work with our students and really am glad that I can bring home a win for us. Yeah, and I love being here. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melly. Board members, Ms. Melly is going to be representing us on Monday in Jefferson City. So there will be thirty-one traveling with Ms. Melly to the Teacher of the Year banquet in Jefferson City, where she'll receive the honor. And then after that, Ms. Melly is going to be traveling nationally for a year, representing Rittner as well. I know that she'll be sharing her passion for kids, telling her stories of this community, and, you know, just talking about all the great work that is being done by teachers here in this district. So, board members and really everyone in the audience, I ask if you would, you know, this is an example of Rittner excellence. I'd ask that we give Ms. Melly a standing ovation. Thank you for being here, Steve.
Thank you so much. Going back to my normal seat now.
So, board members, also a reminder about an upcoming event that again brings communities together. The Rittner Pride and Promise Foundation is holding its tenth annual trivia night on Friday, November eleventh, Veterans Day, at the St. Anne Community Center. Just confirmed today that the jazz band from Rittner High School is going to be performing at the event as well. Doors open at six. The event begins at seven. All proceeds will support the education of children in the Rittner School District. A portion of the funds will support the Rittner Teach and Lead Program, which is our grow-your-own pipeline, as well as supporting mini-grants for teachers. Cost is twenty-five per person, two hundred for a table of eight, and beverages, refreshments, and snacks will be provided. Through the district website, you can access the Pride and Promise Foundation website, and you can register, sign up, and purchase a table through there. We hope that everybody on the board, as well as in the audience, can turn up for this great event. And before I close, just a quick update. There was a trivia night that was held this past Friday. It was the Rittner CoCare Food Pantry. Appreciate everybody that was able to attend. Rittner CoCare Food Pantry held our annual trivia night. Raised forty-six thousand dollars for the CoCare pantry. All volunteer. The pantry is, remains. We've got district staff that are on the board of the pantry, which is a separate 501(c)(3). They're just doing absolutely great work and serving the community. They're serving an all-time high number of families now. They're up to one hundred and forty-three families per day that are being served at the pantry, eighteen hundred families per month. But they are in need of volunteers because of the increased traffic with customers. So anybody on the board or in the audience, if you're interested in picking up some volunteer hours, you can reach out to the pantry. They have a website. The direct number is four nine three six zero two eight. And you can talk with their volunteer coordinator. A lot of work to be done over there. They're doing great things. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kilbride. Moving to 2.03, student representative report, Jared Spur.
Well, first, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This has been a great month for Rittner High School and the Ritter School District. We have CCR date that just passed today, where students were able to explore career fields, such as EMS that I've seen. They had a lawyer there today, and many other career fields that people may not have been interested in or may have been interested in. We had alumni from classes nineteen seventy-one through two thousand and twenty-one on a panel that we had today in our assembly. And the lawyer was on the panel. I believe that was a huge inspiration for our students who attended that assembly. We also have been in Hispanic Heritage Week in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, where we have either dressed up or recognized our own heritage through this week. We had three students from Rittner High School to attend Jackson State University September fourteenth through the eighteenth. We got a chance to explore the HBCU experience as well as the life in Jackson, Mississippi. Myself, Kyla and Kyle Williams represented Rittner High School. And then we were chaperoned by Coach Alyssa Johnson, which was a great time that we had. We also will be having a gala where myself and Kyle Williams will be speaking. And that is on September twenty-third. If you want more information about that, you can see. Our.
October.
October.
October, yes. Our RHS cheer team has won the state competition under the leadership of Coach Alyssa Johnson, so congrats to them. I'm glad it was brought to our attention tonight about the return-to-learning plan. I believe that it is a great effort of our district to try and protect our kids, our students further, and staff members. We have staff members in our building that still wear masks. We have students who still wear masks because of their belief or their concern of their own safety. Myself personally, I wear a mask if I feel like I need to on the day. If someone begins to cough or sneeze or seems to be ill or myself ill, I will put on a mask just to protect not only myself but others around me. I believe that if we were to move away from that, it can be as presented to us, mask optional instead of mask recommended. I had a conversation and we talked about the language of it. So mask optional will be acceptable. And any other COVID restrictions that I haven't really seen besides the mask? We still have hand-tinted dispensers, which have been around since two thousand and five, since I was born. So we can still, that's not really anything new. So that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. If we were to move away from that, I would survey the students as well. We do hear from our parents, but as I wrote in my essay when I got on this board, I say communication between decision-makers and those who the decision is made upon is necessary. So if the students can communicate to the board, that would be phenomenal.
All right. Very appreciated. Thank you, parents. Thank you. Moving to 2.04, MSBA, NSBA report, Ms. Vanessa Enredes-Fort.
Hello. So we have our, I'm sure he's going to talk about it, but we have our conference coming up. And I just wanted to point out that there is the MSBA Delegate Assembly on Friday that I'll be attending. And the biggest thing that we'll be discussing are the MSBA positions. And so I know I said, Lisa, you had asked me for the MSBA positions, but I can send them out to all of you. If you want to, like, just cruise them and if there's anything specific that you want me to, that you have questions about and that we can kind of discuss before I go into that delegate assembly, I would really appreciate that. There were two specifically that I kind of pulled out. It was the vouchers, which they already, MSBA's position is opposed to vouchers, federal vouchers, which, you know, kind of takes away from public funding. And then one around the unhoused students. There is a policy there that I just want to get clarity from them on what they are talking about. So just wanted to note that and bring that up. So please let me know if you have anything to discuss so that I can make sure that we're, our voice is represented at the assembly. Press play.
Edition of the Missouri School Boards Association Board Report. We begin with a look at school safety. While physical safety and emergency planning often get a majority of the headlines, bullying continues to be the number-one issue. Reported to Missouri's anonymous school safety hotline, courage to report. As students are making steady gains in academic skills lost to the pandemic, parents and educators report that some students may have fallen behind in their social development. Safe and Sound Schools Executive Director, Michelle Gay, says that addressing all things that encompass school safety requires a comprehensive approach from schools and communities.
So we've created a comprehensive framework for school safety that really teaches making sure that you're attending to mental and behavioral health, health and wellness, physical safety and security, culture, climate, and community engagement, leadership law and policy, and operations and emergency management. That's a lot. We wouldn't expect everyone to know everything in all of those buckets, if you will, or those domains. But we hope that folks look at that and say, well, I do have a lot to offer in this area because I'm a school nurse, or I'm a school counselor, or I'm an administrator, or I'm a school board member. There's something in there that we all kind of specialize in and are passionate about. And so we bring that to the table. We bring that to the team.
Michelle Gay chose to take action after losing her daughter in the Sandy Hook school tragedy. Since that time, she has focused her energy on improving all aspects of safety and security in schools and communities across the country. She admits that the ever continuing work of improving all things related to school safety is a difficult task.
The fact that it's hard work shouldn't deter us because good things are hard to do. Good work is hard to do. But there are ways to do it. And one of those ways is to hold on to our inspiration for kids. We do this work because of our kids and because they're our future. So not just because we love them or we're dedicated and devoted to them, but because they are our future. So keeping that in mind and also remembering that we're not in this alone. We will find our way forward. We will build and we will get better together is something I think that's critically important for our schools and communities to hold on to during this time when it's all really hard work right now.
Former Columbine High School Regent Frank DeAngelo stressed that as school districts work on school safety plans, there is one key group that must be included.
I tell you, a lot of times what ends up happening is you have people make decisions. And of course, we brought, you know, police officers in. We brought firefighters, and we brought psychologists and social workers, including our staff and parents. But don't underestimate the power of the students.
To find out more about the school's safety information and resources available to your school, contact MSBA Center for Education Safety. Michelle Gay and Frank DeAngelo will both be presenting at the 2022 Midwest School Safety Summit, to be held November second and third in Kansas City. The summit is presented in partnership with MSBA Center for Education Safety and Safe and Sound Schools. Michelle and Frank will also be presenting together at the MSBA Annual Conference that is being held November third through the fifth in Kansas City. The pair will be joined in the first general session by John McDonald as they share personal experiences and valuable insights regarding school safety. Former NASA astronaut Dr. Bernard A. Harris Jr. will speak during the second general session. And Olympian Jackie Joyner-Kersey will be featured at the third general session in Bangwood. The conference also includes more than ninety concurrent sessions, a one-day education expo, and much more. Registration information for both the Midwest School Safety Summit and MSBA Annual Conference is available on the MSBA website. And be sure your school board is represented at the MSBA Fall Delegate Assembly, to be held on Friday, November fourth, in conjunction with the MSBA Annual Conference in Kansas City. The delegate assembly will be voting on position statements that will form the basis of MSBA's advocacy efforts during the coming year. Every MSBA member's school board is entitled to at least one voting delegate at the delegate assembly. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time with your board meeting, and thank you for all that you do to ensure all students succeed.
That concludes my. All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we have 2.05, Special School District Report, Ms. Jennifer Lomis. I'm Brian Robin. Okay. Welcome. Come on up, please.
Good evening, everybody. So as the, as the next delegate person. Ultimate, thank you. I was, had the honor to join in to the last Special School District meeting, which was a great learning opportunity for me. So, of course, keeping with the vision and the mission, and then also our equity statement. One thing about our equity for our Special School District children is to make sure that we are giving them everything every day that they needed, the things that each of them need. So during the governing council meeting, we beforehand, I had received the information of by the numbers. So just wanted to share this with you. This was what was provided to us by the Special School District. We have one thousand two hundred and forty-six students who receive special education services from SSD. Of those, one thousand one hundred and eighty-two actually are in our Rittner schools every day. Forty-nine attend SSD schools or sites, and fifteen receive non-public access programs. Ninety-two of our students attend North Tech, which is very exciting for me. I think North Tech is amazing. And they get to participate in twenty-one different programs. This is a understanding of our different services that are provided to each of our students. I had to take a picture to get it on there because I couldn't get it scanned in. But this shows you just the different, like autism, emotional disturbance, the language impairment, just other different disabilities that are handled and what percentages that we have. And now I'll turn it over to Rob, and he can talk about the PAC information.
And I will say, we don't want to attend a governing council meeting with Jennifer because I've done those for two years, and none of them have taken as long as the last one did. Two and a half hours, we were still going.
But it was a, it was very informative.
So for the two thousand two, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three school year, the SSD PAC's goal, and working with our twenty-two partnering school districts, is a global focus focusing on parents' voice, bringing the parents' voice to the table a little more often. And I have to give credit to Rittner, to Ms. Julie Han, to Angie Faust in making sure that Rittner has always brought those parents' voices to the table, and they're willing to listen. Other districts are not that same way. So one of our focuses is trying to be sure that we're having that parents' voice in every district and in every school. So the other thing is, again, I'm going to give credit to the Rittner District, is the equity in spacing. I know a couple of years ago, we were using storage closets for classrooms. We were covering up tables and chairs with blankets so that it didn't look like a closet. And we have made great strides in fixing that problem, being sure that our students that receive additional services from Special School District have a place that is a classroom that they are comfortable to go to that encourages the learning environment. One of the things that we are looking at is compliance and equity in our understanding of the IEP and SED process. Working with Ms. Faust, we're making sure that all of our buildings know who should be attending an IEP, who is, who's there, and being sure that all voices are being heard at that table and working very diligently to, as a parent, if we need somebody to be at that meeting, that the principals are doing a great job of finding a sub for a classroom for fifteen, twenty minutes while that individual makes it to an IEP meeting. So we're trying to focus as a SSD PAC So we're trying to focus as a SSD PAC of being sure that all of those things are being taken from each, from different districts and seeing how we can mesh those together and help that process for all of our districts.
Before I move on, I want to say something else about the PACs that I noticed when they were talking, the different areas and everything. The PACs are, they're, you know, for their different school districts, but they really help each other in their, each other's districts. It was quite amazing like how they know there's an area, there's a PAC that may be struggling or a district that can't get a PAC started, and they're like, how can we help you? How can we reach out and help you? So they're not just focused on their one school district, they are really focused on the whole state of this town.
We consider it, as the PAC, we consider it a great honor to be able to get the parents more educated. So we have actually this year started a mentoring program for school districts that don't have them in place, and we're matching them up with districts that do and say, okay, what's worked great for you? How can we help you incorporate this? How can we? So we have spent a lot of time this year trying to get those in place so that each district has information getting out to their parents. So yes, to say that we, you know, am I going to thank Rittner and talk to Rittner first? Absolutely. But when it comes to Normandy or Pattonville needing help, we're one of the first to jump in to hit and lend that. Going on, we've completed our Public Review Committee report. So PRC updated, our PRC report was filed with the State of Missouri's Department of Education, person at Bill 687. I did have, Ms. Clover, I can talk tonight, did scan this in for you so that everybody has a copy of what our recommendation. So on the PRC, you had three governing council members, you had three PAC representatives, and then you had three representatives that was appointed by DSE. And we went through every piece of Special School District, looking at personnel, looking at finances. We started out with one meeting a month. By the end, we were meeting every week and at times, two or three times a week on phones with each other trying to complete this. One of the things that we found is Special School District is governed by three different entities. They are by their Board of Education, they are governed by the governing council, and they are governed by the PAC, the Parents Advisory Committee. So all three of those individuals were working in three separate capacities and not having that opportunity to talk and work together. So that was one of the things that we had made a recommendation to. Whoa, oh, I have, Dr. Keenan. Dr. Keenan with Special School District, she jumped on that right away. We had our first meeting last month, and our next meeting is in November, that we are all working together to be sure that each side of the table, each side of the governing of Special School District is hearing each other and at least having some representation. So we commend Special School District for taking that jump so that each one of our students, you know, they are our students, they just receive additional services from SSD, and they're looking out for each one of our students. This was just as, for the governing council meeting, they went on to give us an update on their CSIP, Continuous School Improvement Plan, so updating on the partnership agreement with partnering districts. They're looking at the student performance, workforce excellence, engagement, and equity. Again, Special School District is taking a bigger interest and a bigger focus in getting out into our partnering districts and hearing what everybody has to say and being sure that what that school district needs, that school district is getting. So we're trying to be as equitable as possible.
That's your general assurance.
So your general assurance docs are the, are part of what is required. So the partnering agreement is an agreement that we're entering into with the schools, but your general assurance documents are a required document that is updated every year, and those documents help outline what areas are Rittner's responsibility and what areas are Special School District's responsibility. So they do kind of, as much as we partner together and work together, they do have that line that says, okay, we have to do this and you have to do this part. So that is a requirement, and so they were giving an update on that.
Any other question or any questions?
Sounds like you had a good night.
It was long, but it was good. Very informative.
No, thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Moving to 3.08, Board Member Comments. Does anyone from the board have anything to comment on for this evening?
For 3.1.
Oh, 3.01. Hello. Moving. The computer be uploaded. We know in there, and it wants to block me out. All right, so all finished with Special School District, moving to the business items. Thank you. 3.01, Return to Learning Plan Purple. I like my paper cut.
So Board Members, I'm here before you this evening to present the Return to Learning Plan recommendation for this October business meeting. As was said earlier, there was a Return to Learning Committee meeting that was held recently, and the notes and the feedback from that meeting was shared with the participants and was also pushed out to board members. I'd like to start with sharing the COVID dashboard. So our COVID dashboard, which we put out every Friday afternoon for students and staff, from my perspective, looks very favorable at this point. We do see low numbers of positive cases of staff and of students, as well as low numbers of isolation. We're dependent on making sure that we are getting good data to make sure that this dashboard is as, as accurate and as effective as possible. The dashboard is shared with staff, the dashboard is also put out on the front page of the website so that the, the community has access to it. There was feedback on all sides from the Return to Learning Committee around the value and utility of the dashboard. Some feel that the dashboard is not necessary any longer. Some of the other feedback from some members is that it does provide information to families to make decisions. Some of the other feedback was that what does it hurt? What does it hurt in maintaining the dashboard to keep the information out and shared? So there was, there was feedback that kind of ran the, ran the gamut. So each month, just give a bit of the perspective on the archive of, of changes in the plan. So we moved in line with the CDC away from contact tracing back in January to isolating symptomatic and positive persons. The CDC processed, so it went down to five days for those symptomatic and positive people. Days six through 10, then move into wearing masks as symptoms start to subside. In February, with the board's leadership, we moved away from mandatory masking to mask recommended, and we remain in the mask recommended status at this point. Also, a trigger was established, that's a 2% positive by building. So back in February, we moved away from a district-wide strategy to building by building, that if a building has 2% positive cases of students, that building would go to mandatory masking for not less than two weeks. There was a period of time when we had a spike where we had restrictions on spectators that it was eliminated as the data started to subside. Also, we kept the mandate on buses up until we transitioned away from mask mandatory on buses in line with the Transportation Authority. So I'm here today to recommend to you, keeping with the current structures that we have in place, that being maintaining the dashboard, which is updated on Fridays, and also maintaining the 2% threshold. As has been shared, we've not hit the 2% threshold since it was enacted. We had one building, Rittner Middle, they got close, that's about three and a half weeks ago, Rittner Middle got up to 1.8%, and then the data within a week and a half started to subside again. As was shared earlier, I do believe it is the right step to survey the community to get a broader perspective because it is accurate that in that Return to Learning Committee, there were a relatively low number of participants. I think there were 14 or 15 participants to be exact. So I think getting a broader perspective of the community around the utility of this work would be helpful, which would be data that I could share with you and could be valuable in making the recommendation. But I, I do believe at this point, it is in our students' best interest and in our organization's best interest to maintain the returning, Return to Learning Plan as is. Can you answer any questions?
I guess I would, I would look at that, and I just wondered, having more information is, is fine and helping maintaining the dashboard there, but with the low numbers that we've been seeing the past few months, I wonder, I mean, at this point, you know, the next thing to see on the news is it's going, we're coming up with flu season and cold season and everything else. And I, at this point, I'm just wondering, what would be the, the reason to continue this, seeing the numbers as a mandate? I mean, information is great, but I guess I'd wonder then, with that, how soon are we going to see results from the survey?
So we have the district survey that's out right now, the community-wide survey. The last day for that survey was today. Wanted to separate the end of that survey from pushing out this smaller survey so there wasn't confusion. It would be as early as next week to push out this smaller survey.
And the smaller survey you're saying is to gauge the communities?
To get community-wide feedback on the use of, the continued use of the COVID dashboard and the continued keeping the 2% trigger. It's those, those are the two specific questions. As was shared, a lot of the other strategies that are in the Return to Learning Plan that played a significant role in the past, specifically social distancing, class size restriction, all of those pieces have essentially gone away. The two major components of the plan are the dashboard and the trigger. We do still have the ionizers in place on our HVAC systems. That was something that was, was implemented, but to get community feedback really on those two strategies in the plan.
I will just say that, I just want to make a comment, that as a parent of a child, who has two children who are at Marvin, we had never gotten RSV before, and we got RSV this year. I've also just seen and heard from educators in some of our different elementary schools that are also getting, you know, sick with RSV, which I know all the right back-to-school germs and all of that, but I, it really does just make me think about, you know, what is our, what's our process for when children are sick in general, like when to send them back? You know, because my kids lost two weeks combined of going to school because they were sick. So, I mean, I do think there is some validity to having data out there on what's going on in the general community so that parents can just feel reassured about sending their kids back to school or just what's going on. But yeah, it just feels like, you know, there's all sorts of things going around, and I, I started sending them back, you know, with masks, and whether or not they'll wear them all day, that's, you know, I can't control that, but I just wanted to, you know, because I've noticed that, and I've heard educators talk a lot about RSV and different respiratory things that are going around as well.
Do you have anything else?
Yes. As one who likes to see the data, I like, I'm sure Dr. Currie, I like to see like laws of social. I think it's good for high school students that are like me, or maybe not like me, but like to see what's going on in our building. About COVID, I think that we should keep the, keep the dashboard, that would be the best. So if I see there are three students, I don't know who those three students came in contact with, so that would lead me to wear masks in the building.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm all right with the dashboard because that's information. I guess it just eliminating 2% threshold is where I would want to be. I'm just, I doubt if we'll ever get there, so as a viewpoint, I don't know. But I guess I, and I say it at home, my wife looks that new with that look, but don't know what that is. When is it over? There has to be a time, a date, a time for an event to say that it's over. I guess, for me, I guess I'm done with that. Probably have more kids at school that have colds and rhinosities and other maladies that make them sick more than COVID. And I just want to say, you know, when are we going to be done? We can have the dashboard there for eternity if that's what we want, but I think everything behind that needs to be done.
Yeah, myself, I, you know, I, I am, I do like having masks, I like wearing them, if, you know, and even if I, myself, if I have, if I have a cold, or even if it's allergies, and I know it's allergies, I still like to have a mask because I cough with this allergies and everybody else around me doesn't know, they don't know, oh, I, she's just got an allergy problem, so I, I like to have them. And I really, I like the idea of wearing them, but I, I am, I am questioning also the, the 2%. And then, you know, the, you know, the dashboard, you know, the information out there is fine, but I wonder if we should still be using that? And then the question along with that is, if we eliminate that 2%, and we don't have that anymore, if we end up with one or two or three schools that end up with a high amount of COVID, aren't we able to, you know, to vote and put that back in, you know, at some point? So I'm thinking that it might not be a bad idea to try without that 2% and see what happens.
And we would still have the data though, right? Like we would still, even if, let's say hypothetically, we didn't have the 2% anymore, we would still be collecting the data, right? Like we would still have?
Yeah, so the recommendation would be to continue the dashboard.
I guess when we talk about, Penny, you have mentioned to, we could still vote. What would we be voting on at that point in time? I mean, because if you don't have a trigger, then you're going to say, oh, well, the school has 50 kids that have COVID, so now we need to go back and vote and say, wear masks, you have to wear masks. What's going to be your number at that point in time that you would say we will vote? So, I mean, we either would have a trigger or we would not have a trigger, regardless of what the numbers would look like. That would be my opinion of that, because I don't see how we would come back and vote. Or what's going to be, what's going to make us come back and vote? It's still a trigger. At the end of the day, it's still a certain number that you're looking for if you're saying that you're going to come back and vote on something. So there's a question that we, I'm thinking, I'm hearing everybody saying that they're okay with the dashboard because that helps individuals kind of make decisions about how they want to do things for their families, but, and for themselves. But there's opportunity when we're talking about keeping a trigger or not having a trigger or, you know, what's the magic number? I mean, I don't know.
Thank you for, thank you for explaining what's going on in my brain. I think that's, that's kind of what I was trying to infer, is that the, the trigger for COVID wasn't necessarily helpful because there is still another respiratory issue. Like if we had this for RSV, it would trigger, we, we're probably at, my God, you know, some ridiculous percentage if we're being honest, and it would then, then what? You know, and so it's just, it's frustrating in part because, you know, I too, I prefer, I've always preferred the mask, and I think... I've always preferred the mask and I think it's, the data did show that RSV, that different respiratory issues didn't happen as much when we were masking. But we're past that now and so I just kind of feel like, yeah, the trigger is a little, not that it's irrelevant, but it just feels like, I hope I'm making sense, sorry. It just feels like there's also other things and other illnesses that are disrupting children and inner learning and just making kids sick in general that feel like, well, we're not, we don't have a trigger on that, you know, so.
I would just always, you know, more information is always better when you're making big decisions. You know, the idea of moving quickly on this survey, we're just encouraging you to consider that so that you can get that community-wide perspective. It's possible the community is in the same position that some board members are, where they don't see the utility of having this trigger anymore. It's also possible that large numbers of people in the community could be very tuned in to 2%. So, you know, the recommendation tonight is to keep the trigger. You can decide to eliminate that. I would just encourage you to, to hold on just a bit. If we can get that survey out early next week and share that information, you know, with you, because the work is always trying to do the work with to the greatest extent possible. You know, you've heard some voices that are adamantly opposed and I appreciate that, those voices for always coming to the meeting and stepping up. I just, you know, want to make sure that there, there might be a lot of voices in the community that are right in line with that, there might be a lot of voices out there that are not. And so we just ask for a bit of time being next week to get that survey data to you.
Can I ask two questions?
Yeah.
Number one, it's not required by the law anymore, right?
So the 30-day approval is not required by the law anymore. The why for presenting this every 30 days is around communication.
And can we table this until after we have the survey?
So, you can either table it, you know, the 30-day expiration, which was required by statute, is no longer in place. If you table it, then the current, we would be operating with what we have right now.
So I feel like, I mean, do we want a survey?
I mean, I think the data is beneficial, it can help make decisions. I'm not saying I don't support having a trigger, let me be clear on that. I'm not saying that. What that magic number is, I can't say that, but I don't want it to be that, oh, well, when we get more people, now we're going to have a trigger. I think that gives mixed messages, it's confusing. We have to be willing to stand and make a decision about, yes, we're going to have a trigger or no, we're not going to have a trigger. So that's why I was giving that scenario. So if we get 50 kids in one school, now when I say, oh, no, now this school has to wear masks, that's going to be confusing right now. So we are going to have one or not.
Oh, I just said consistency is key.
Right, right. Exactly.
That's why I'm afraid for us to make any snap decisions without getting that feedback.
And I'm just saying, I wish we had a trigger for all.
We need one for colds and flu and...
Get your flu shots.
So, so you've got an option. You can either approve the recommendation or you can table the recommendation, which essentially is the same thing at this point, to wait for survey data or you can go in a different direction.
Well, if we wait for the survey data, next time we'll be together for the next visit.
Or the work session.
Or the work session.
Okay, three or four weeks.
Do we really think something's going to happen between now and then? Well, oh my God.
Things will happen, I don't know what, just...
I'd ask for the survey, but I'd like for us to take into consideration parents' part two, where we add in students, because I think that that's important. So I know that when we do the surveys, you have the opportunity to select if you're a parent or a student or a staff member.
And I don't know, maybe this is not a great idea or suggestion, but I know parent-teacher conferences are coming up, I can't remember the exact date, but if there's surveys there onsite, if some of them are onsite and parents can fill them out there, you know, filling it out online is a barrier, so just no idea.
You know, one time when I was at a parent-teacher conference, they actually had a whole bunch of computers set up and you could, they were like, oh, and when you get done with your conference, you can go down here and take this survey. And like people were doing that, so.
So even if we noticed certain schools or certain grades, you know, that didn't complete the other survey that we had, the community one, I mean, I know K was the last day also, but just something to think about.
So then the board is going to be tabling this decision, so then the surveys would go out as early as next week, potentially also including a parent-teacher conference for feedback. And then this could be an item at the November work session?
Yeah, if we could do the work session, that would be great.
We need a formal motion to table.
I motion to table?
Okay. Beth Thomas.
No.
Mrs. Lottis?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Ms. Bummerdunn?
Yes.
Ms. Marquisclumpa?
Yes.
I asked about yes.
Thank you, board.
All right, thank you. Coming to 3.02, Board of Education Communication Planning, Mr. Cooperich.
Hello. So I'm not seeking permission for anything tonight, I'm just providing you information and stuff. But I'm going to go through our, our vision and our mission, our equity statement as well. So this process started a long time ago. I was looking back at my notes in terms of like the communication goals and I feel like it would come to a pretty good place now in terms of like the presentation that I'm going to show you tonight, in terms of like the, where we're heading into the future in terms of the goals. So we first met about this and talked about it in July of 2019, so just taking a look back. And then we had all kinds of events happen between now and then. So I'm very excited to bring this to you. The presentation is going to be, like, there's going to be three parts to the presentation. So I'm going to go, we're going to talk about the process, which we've talked about several times actually, just to go through. And that's the ARPI process, which I really, like, that's a process that we use for all of our communication goals. And then we're going to talk about the ideas for the plan itself and the strategies that you as a board can take on in terms of the, the plan as well. And then we'll talk about some of the key messages from the district and some of the things that you can talk about in terms of whenever we're meeting with people. So I'm kind of getting a little bit ahead of myself in terms of that, but. So the last time that we had met, we talked about the communication goals area for the board and we did talk about the fact that increased community engagement for every board member in the community was where the board would like to proceed in terms of our communication goals. And that was according to the survey data that we had that we pulled from the board evaluations. And then so from there, I've sort of just built the plan out actually in terms of that. So I'll go to the next slides and sort of talk about it. So we talk about the ARPI process, which is, which is actually known by heart and round of research, planning, implementation, and evaluation. So there's a system that we have in terms of communication. So it's a continuous loop. It's something that we're always looking at, we're always developing. Communication is not something that you start and you stop. It's not static. It's something that you're always working on and always developing. And so in terms of like this, I wanted to tell you, in terms of the plan, this is your plan as a board. I'm helping to facilitate it and I'm always here to help you and to help along the way. But also I'll give you some strategies and also later in the, in the presentation, you'll see some dates that are attached to some of these. Those aren't like hard, those were just dates that I had to put to it, just so we had some dates that we could work with and we could talk about in terms of that. So as we go through, what we talked about, the ARPI process, so research, we're looking at data determining dates with the community, which we've done. Planning, which is like sort of where we're in now and we're almost, we're super, super close to the implementation phase, which is pretty, which is like actually the most fun. My favorite part of the whole thing is research. I like the research and the planning. I'm good with the implementation, but then the evaluation, but I think really just looking at the goals and the communication goals. I think sometimes we make it sound like really super complicated and things that are really, really simple, you know, in terms of the communication goals. So I'm trying to hopefully break that down. So we talk about the implementation and the evaluation. So the implementation is soon, I've got it in my notes here. And then the evaluation, typically we look at the evaluation of our communication goals like on a school year basis, so we're at the end of the school year. Do you have any questions so far about any of this? I know there's been a lot of information here at the meeting tonight, so I want to make sure this, and I talk fast and I apologize, it gets late after like 12 hours of the day. I'm like, I sort of like fade a little bit, so I'm trying to make sure that I'm still good, so. So I can take you into the communications plan and this is like, it's actually kind of the fun part. So the goal, if, as board members, you agree upon it, is increased community engagement for the Board of Education. That's like our higher overarching goal. That's what overlooks everything. And I don't know, do you all agree that that's sort of the way that you would want to go in terms of the communications goals? And that's why I say it seems so simple, doesn't it? Like that's your, but that is your goal, your simple stated goal. And you start out with your goal and then you move down, so you move your strategies as you go through. So your objectives. So the objectives are to connect with written families and community members, create and maintain connections with local municipalities and local elected officials, and facilitate two-way communication with all stakeholders and be an excellent, I like to say, be an excellent active listener within the community. So those would be the objectives of your goal. So then you take it a step like lower than that and these are your strategies. And so this is like how we would achieve our, our goals in terms of the communication. And some of those, like attending local community events. One that I bolded and I highlighted, and I see it sometimes, not a lot, is a picture is worth a thousand words by literally, there's some simple things you can do in communications by telling our story, just sharing photos that you have if you're out in the community. If you just like, I will tell you that selfies are amazing, like especially if you're an elected official, like taking a quick selfie with a group of kids or an organization that you're working with, it's just a tremendous way to be able to share like what you're doing in the community. It really is, like it's, like I say, a lot of this is so simple, but it's so effective. And it's been, it's effective in everything that we do in terms of communications campaign. But the key is like with everything else is consistency, making sure that you just are out in the community, like sharing our story. And so sharing information on our website, we're a tool in terms of our department to share information. So if, and I'll just give like some examples, if you're MSBA or something like that and you're, you know, take a picture with like, like an elected official or anything like that, just share that with us and we can share that out with the community. And that's just one of those parts of community engagement. So there's just different ways that you can do this and it's really up to you as a board to like get really creative in the way that we share our communications and tell our story. So then we'll also gather feedback from our annual district survey. The survey's out now and the question that we have right now is how would you rate the job performance of the written Board of Education? So we do have, we'll have the baseline data. I actually have data and previous surveys from that as well that we can take a look at and see. And then really the goal is if you're out in the community multiple times, attending local meetings with many different people, when our families take the survey, well, they have an interaction with you that's a positive interaction, they remember and they say, hey, I remember that, I would rate them favorably in terms of that, of the survey. And so, does this all, does all make sense and everything so far? Is it, is it okay? So the implementation, the tactics and the timelines, this is where we implement the process. We're talking about everything. So I put dates on here of December 1st. These do not have to be the dates. If, as a board, you want to push these back with these up, we're, we're amenable to any of these sort of dates. And a lot of it would be like for the board members, just having a list of events that we would like to go to. Really creating a comprehensive list of community events and meetings, that's something that our team can help with. We can look in the community, we can help you with that and put those together. That's not only, it's something that I have regularly available, but it's absolutely something that we're willing to help with and put together. But some of those are district and school events, PTO and PTA meetings, community events, municipal meetings and like service groups in the community. If you like getting up early, you can join us at the OVA, things like that. So then as a board, you would commit to attending a certain number of community events each quarter. I just do that like on a quarterly basis so that you're not reporting out every, it's up to you really as a board in terms of when you want to present out of how many events, things like that. But just, I did the math on this and I'm a communications person, so you have to realize that, number one. But if every board member would attend one event a month for eight months, that's 56 contacts in the community. And really it's not a lot of time to give up if you were in the community, if you spent an hour or two just going to meet people. And so that's 56 more times as a, as a board that you would have contact with those in the community. If it's multiple events, if it's, I mean, if it's the same municipal meeting, you would have multiple opportunities to, to meet with them. And so hopefully I'm just trying to, to simplify it as such, it is a huge impact within the community with a little, you know, just a little bit of extra effort in terms of going to those meetings, so. And then in terms of the evaluation, we would take the, it sounds like a lot more, a lot more like complicated than it is, but really just that we're going to evaluate how many members, events the board members are participating each year, the increased number of connections and partnerships. And I will tell you just from going to, I can give like some examples, but like for, I've met with the, from Scooter's Coffee, like I meet them at the OVA meetings, things like that. So now I have a relationship with Scooter's Coffee, so they are able to help us by giving like some, you know, some different, some discounts, things like that to the district. But those sort of people that you're going to meet within the community are going to be crucial, like connecting us in terms of a board and with the, the community. And then one of the things I was thinking about in terms of like sharing your progress, you don't have to do this on a monthly basis, you can do it on a quarterly basis, but just sharing progress towards the board, like during your board member comments each month. It doesn't have to be a long process, you can say, hey, I'm at the Lions Club this month, I'm at, you know, we went to a PTO meeting this month at Voodoo Elementary, got to meet some of the families there and just sort of reporting out and that's sort of how you would keep track of those. And then at the end of the year, we would look at the survey results and say, hey, did by going out and participating in these community events and getting to know people in the community, did this increase our, increase like the data within that, that question, so. So do you have any questions about like the plan? Is it, I know it's, it's not super complicated, it's pretty, it's a simple plan, but actually it's quite effective. It's sort of like the way that we would do our, you know, like a tax levy or bond issue campaign as well, where you just want to be able to get and meet as many people as you can. But it's also, I think, best practice for board members to be able to be out in the community and get to know as many people as possible. The key messages actually, so this is my favorite part and this is like the greatest part ever, our key messages are so easy. I mean, I could stand right now for 15 minutes and talk about all the amazing things that have happened in the school district this year. We've already heard about the Channel 5 visits, we've heard about the positive media, you know, that we've received this year, but, I mean, you can talk about the victory in the classroom, we can talk about our renewed focus on academic achievement for written students. You can talk about our two state teachers of the year, and I joke around at home and I, this is probably going to sound weirdly self-serving, but, so I tell people that I've worked with seven pro football Hall of Famers and two teachers, state teachers of the year. So it's pretty, pretty good, pretty good run so far for me, so. I joke around about that. I don't mean to like be self-serving in terms of like that, but that was like sort of what I did. And I helped do publicity, I had nothing to do with any of their awards or anything like that, or the fact that they made the pro football Hall of Fame or teacher of the year, but it's also really, it's cool to be connected with like such great success. But you can talk about our amazing support in place for written students and families, our district goals, our three E's at the high school. I mean, there's just so much that you could break these down if you wanted to go to a local municipal meeting and just do a public comment and just talk about, introduce yourself and just take any of these talking points, talk for five minutes on those talking points and you'd be good to go. So we're always here, like I said, to help with key messages, to help with finding the events, but then really as a board, it would be up to you to determine like how many events you would like to attend and then tracking those events so that we could be able to track our goals, so. And that's actually all that I have in terms of the presentation, so. Is there any questions you have for, for me in terms of that? Does it all make, does it all make sense in terms of like the, hopefully do you feel like that from where we've started to where we've come, we've sort of made, I think we've made some pretty good strides in terms of that. I think that it's a, a pretty solid communications goal and a plan, even though it seems really simple, I think it's also something that would be very beneficial to both for the board and the district within the community.
That would be very helpful for me, even to set that goal so that we could also have the dates available so that we can organize it, because not everybody can obviously go, but also break the hand up so that everybody has an opportunity to go throughout our district, to be able to go to community meetings or, yeah, I think it's a great idea. It's going to be organization.
Yeah, I can provide those. I don't know if the best way to, in terms of that, but I can put that list together and maybe provide it to you through like the Friday memo or other, other ways like that.
That's a good way, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. I would love to have a list so that we can kind of even talk and figure it out so that we can go out.
That'd be great.
Okay, that's perfect. So I'll have those dates and I'll pull together the local municipal meetings, I'll, I'll do some research and find some of our local, local groups, like organizations within the community as well. Like I said, if you just plan on attending maybe one every month... Like I said, if you just plan on attending maybe one every month or one every couple of months, you can still have like 50 to 60 impacts within the community. And if you want to go for more, then absolutely, I was just trying to help you just start off so that you don't feel so overwhelmed. I think it's always easy to, when you start off a little bit slower, to be able to increase as opposed to like having a huge goal and then not, you know, not feeling like you're achieving that goal. So I think just taking those steps. And I think that once you will see in the data, the incremental steps towards the goal, I think you'll start seeing improved data as well within that. And I think it'll just overall have a better, just a, like just more of a connection within the community, so.
So Doug, I'll say that I think this is great. We, I know I've talked to several different people and we've talked about how do we get certain words out there? So how do we make sure people are hearing these things? So this really sets, sets the base for us on where to start and how to get that out there. So absolutely appreciate it.
Absolutely. And I can help with elevator speeches, whatever you need. If you need just like a quick elevator, elevator pitch or something like that, but I mean, there's so many great things going on in the community, I mean, within our district that you can share with the community right now, but I don't think there'll be a problem with having enough information to share. It'll probably just be cut, be cut off after like the time when, if anybody has any of those meetings, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's also helpful to have like really clear calls to action, like whenever those things, like the website, like subscribers, like I didn't know that, you know? Like that's a simple thing that we can really rally around or have some more like just actual people power around. So it'd be great to have some like key communication things when things are coming up, whether it's a big event or like a, you know, like when we've had our legislative action committee, like certain things that we really want to again rally a large number around, to have us equipped with that information, like just key highlights or key calls to action for people as we're, you know, just out having conversation or talking to parents, talking to our neighbors, so. I appreciate this.
I really appreciate this, Doug. I know this is something that for myself personally, every year when we do our evaluations, our self-evaluation for the board, this is something I want, oh, nope, there is an opportunity. Because I think we do a good job of being present in things that are happening specifically in the district, some of those larger scale events, but then thinking about like our elementary and the middle schools, or we may not have our kids enrolled at in those spaces, like how are we showing up there? And then thinking about the municipalities. So I appreciate the effort and the work that was done to outline this in this light, using the archive format, but then also giving us some dates to be mindful of that. I appreciate that.
No, I wouldn't, like I said, those were dates, whenever I put, I, I have to put dates to things because I just want to make sure that everything that we have, is they're all SMART goals, they have to be timely. And so especially in communication, you can't have things that are, you know, that are sort of going to be good because they never really get accomplished. And so making sure that we have those, like those goals like that. But I also, those are, the dates I put in were just ones that I wanted to just.
But that makes me.
Yeah. So those are really up to the board in terms of like when you would like to start the, the program and everything like that. But in the meantime, I will do research and collect the dates and then share those so that you can get started on like our methodology of like, I think that there's going to be a little bit of just having to figure out like who goes where if you want to attend those meetings, but it's not the worst thing in the world too, if more than one board member attends like, you know, an event or something like that, if you're interested in that. So I think that just being able to go out and meet people and just introduce yourselves in the community is just a tremendous opportunity. I think it'd be very beneficial to everyone involved, so. Thank you for your time.
So the first, the first time I was board president, we just, we talked about this. This is, this is an ongoing thing for this board. And we decided that we would have, meet, meet the board, informal coffee, cookies, iced tea at a school. And we went to various schools, middle schools, elementary schools, and the, the, the amount of people we got weren't, weren't tremendous, but we had, we had some people turn out and it was just a formal, informal discussion. You had questions you want to ask a board member or the whole group? We were there. The downside of that was, and I was reminded of this, was when the board goes somewhere, the superintendent wants to be there and the superintendent then brings all of his administers, administrators with him because the board is somewhere. And it was, it was a strain on them for putting on, you know, an eight or 10 hour day, whatever they put in, and then meeting with us or being there with us to support us at that meeting at six or seven o'clock at night. So I, I'm reminded of that. Then the next thing we tried to do after that was we went to the various schools at dismissal, especially the elementary schools. And we had, you know, like the trays of cookies we get, we had those and we would talk to the parents as they were picking up the kids or waiting to pick up their kids. And that worked better because we were going to them.
I was just going to say, that's the key. We need to go to them.
We, we were going to them. We weren't standing in the lobby of Hake or wherever waiting for them to come in there. We were taking cookies to them, saying, hey, I'm Brad Thomas, I'm a board member, if you like a cookie, you have any questions? You want to talk? How are you doing? And that 32nd to one minute discussion as they're waiting to pick their kid up was, was important. And that, that proved more successful than waiting for people to come to us. We didn't have to have a superintendent there, he was at the time with Paul Dora, and we didn't have to have his whole administrative team there because it was, at the most it was like 15 minutes long. I mean, we know how quick people come to an elementary school and then leave. And it's about 10, 15 minute process. So we had that window that we could discuss things with them and they knew ahead of time the board was going to be at their school and to talk to them. So that was, that was another way that we, we tried as a board to, to do that.
You know, when I was thinking about this, like the most important, like I was just thinking about what would be impressive, like for me, sitting out there in the audience, I was just trying to put that in a different perspective, but somebody from one of our local municipalities came in and said, and wanted to speak during public comments and said, told us about what was happening in their city, it would be really impressive, I think, to our, our, our audience and to the board if we were to do that. So I think in a very similar way, it would be just a great opportunity for us to tell our story in a different way and for a different audience.
I think it would be, it would be very good if we could, if we could drop divide and conquer or however you want to say it. We've got nine municipalities that we, we overlay to and, you know, going, going to their meeting once a month or whatever would, would be beneficial so that they knew we weren't adversaries. Some of the, some of the little smaller municipalities look at us as like, you know, you guys are the big kids on the block and do whatever you want. And I think we need to have more of a partnership with them, talk to them and get to know them so that we don't have that thought process out there. You know, if they know that we're just, we're just here to make things better for the whole area, not just for our buildings, for our property. You know, we're committed, we're committed to that, to everybody here because how, how the, how the district goes, so goes the community. And where the community goes, so goes the district. It's, it's a hand in hand thing.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
All right, moving to 3.03, the Board of Education Self-Evaluation. We're going to table this until November so that we can, I'd like to motion to table, yes.
Wait a minute. Yes, even though we're not voting on it? Yes. I motion to table the Board of Education Self-Evaluation.
Second.
All right, Dr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mrs. Love.
Yes.
Mr. Garden.
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Enricus Pimblett.
Yes.
I'm also voting yes. Moving to 3.04, appointment, the Board of Education Director, Mrs. Michelle Clover.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, good evening, everybody. We are going to select our, our new board member. We'll make our individual, the board will make their individual selections to fill the board vacancy. The board members reviewed all applications and conducted interviews on September 29th, 2022. Board of Education did not deliberate after the interviews. The board will use a three-round elimination process to select its appointee. In the first round, each member will select three or fewer candidates. Candidates receiving more than one vote will be placed on the list for the second round. Applicants need not be present. Up for consideration are Kelly Adams, Eric Deepenbrock, Robert Eaton, Linda Henning, and Kimberly Kellum. In the, in the second round, each member will select two or fewer candidates from the second round list. Candidates who receive more than one vote will be placed on the list for the third and final round. In the last round, each member will select no more than one candidate. Applicant who receives the most votes will be the candidate for the appointment. In case of a tie, the members will proceed to a fourth round runoff. A candidate must receive four or more votes in the final round of voting to be appointed to the board. Members have the right not to vote for any candidate at any time during the selection process. And each step of the validating process will be open to public inspection following the meeting. So we're going to do this old school, paper. So, so let me get to the right page here. So if each board member would write their name on the slip-up paper that they have, and for the first round, they, you will select three or fewer candidates. So just put a check mark next to the candidate's name and make sure your name's on your slip-up paper and then I will call up them and tally them. Okay, so I will read the board member and who they selected in round one. So Vanessa Pimblott selected Kelly Adams and Robert Eaton. Penny DeGarden selected Kelly Adams, Robert Eaton, and Kimberly Kellum. Jennifer Lotus selected Robert Eaton and Kimberly Kellum. Brad Thomas selected Robert Eaton. Dr. Elvin Wilson selected Kelly Adams, Robert Eaton, and Kimberly Kellum. And Lisa Glover Jones selected Kelly Adams, Eric Deepenbrock, and Robert Eaton. So, yes. Candidates receiving more than one vote will be placed, placed on the list for the second round. So that means for the second round, you will choose between Kelly Adams, Robert Eaton, and Kimberly Kellum on your list. So make sure you write your name and then choose from those three applicants. Does that make sense? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You're right. Two or fewer. So for the second round, each board member was asked to select two or fewer candidates. The candidates who received more than one vote will be placed on the list for the third and final round. Dr. Elvin Wilson selected Robert Eaton and Kimberly Kellum. Brad Thomas selected Robert Eaton. Jennifer Lotus selected Robert Eaton. Penny DeGarden selected Kelly Adams and Robert Eaton. Vanessa Pimblott selected Kelly Adams and Robert Eaton. And Lisa Glover Jones selected Kelly Adams and Robert Eaton. Okay, so for round two, Robert Eaton and Kelly Adams will move forward. So now each board member for the last round is, will select no more than one candidate. The applicant who receives the most votes will be the candidate for the appointment. In case of a tie, we will proceed to a fourth runoff round. A candidate must receive four or more votes in the final round of voting to be appointed. Vanessa Enrique Pimblott selected Robert Eaton. Lisa Glover Jones selected Robert Eaton. Penny DeGarden selected Robert Eaton. Brad Thomas selected Robert Eaton. Jennifer Lotus selected Robert Eaton. Dr. Elvin Wilson selected Robert Eaton. Rob Eaton will be appointed as the next Board of Education member. Mr. Eaton, if you would like to come up here. And you guys can, yeah, as I was going to say, you guys have to. Send all that back down here and I will get into this. You can run this side. I will renew the oath of office and you can repeat after me and then when you are done, this side. Oh, both of them. Okay. Great? Okay. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director.
And in for Ritter School District, County of St. Louis, State of Missouri.
And in for Ritter School District, County of St. Louis, State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability, according to law, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, according to law, so help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, great. Now I'll ask you, let's sit over here. No green cups, just has to be going.
It's the only one I could grab that was clean in the cabinet tonight.
Dr. Elvin Wilson?
I am done. Thank you. Welcome.
Next up, 3.06, construction update, Mr. Michael Smith.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just going to provide a quick update just on construction, both past and present.
Just going to provide a quick update just on construction, both past and present. Some before and after pictures so you can see progress that we've been making over the past year or so. Of course, highly effective facilities help us meet our mission and vision, and our facilities should provide the best physical environment for learning to occur, and all district schools should provide consistent, equitable environments. So you know, a couple of years ago, we did an asphalt repair at the high school and actually District 5. And it's still looking good, but we are on, do have to have a maintenance program with that asphalt. It's not something that's just a one-and-done, and so we're going to have to continue year after year doing sealing and striping. Also, you remember that we made improvements to our playgrounds and lockers. The lockers were at the secondary schools, and then Booter Elementary School and Wyland Elementary School. Made improvements to the, to the ramp at the high school, where we had railing that was rusting and falling apart, and stone that was starting to split, and so those repairs were made, as well as renovations to the press box and the restrooms. That followed, if you remember, a fire in one of the restrooms, and we took, we took advantage of that and did some renovations to, to improve the press box. Improvements were made to the culinary lab at the high school in order to upgrade that so it's more in line with a culinary lab, a professional lab. You can see that, as was stainless countertops and sinks, and it's, it's actually something that our kids would see actually in a true restaurant. We've also just recently made renovations to the science lab at Rittner Middle School. This summer and into this fall, we made improvements to lighting throughout the district, switching over to LED. I'm sure that's something that, if you've driven by any of our schools, when it's dark out, you've probably noticed a dramatic improvement to the lighting and therefore the security of our campuses. We've also improved the RHS marquee so that it becomes something that celebrates our, We noticed at the very end of the school year that our pool was in need of replastering at the high school. Once the pool was drained, you can see that there are pox marks in the side of the pool that you can see on that picture, and then I have some just flakes of the, of the plaster that had been falling off. So that repair became necessary in order to preserve the pool, in order to prevent it from causing some serious permanent damage, and the pool does look amazing now. We've also made improvements to the counselor's suite at high school. Concrete repairs over the summer at the high school and at Island, repairing both sidewalks, parking lots, and the front stairs at the, at high school. Tuck pointing has been taking place throughout the summer, actually began before school let out, and it's been lasted actually until this school year started. It was a very large project to undertake, and I, if, if you know what you're looking for when it comes to tuck pointing, there have been tremendous improvements. And just as a reminder, two schools that we did not provide tuck pointing for are the middle schools, and so that's something that is going to be coming back around. Some things that are in progress, in late July, there was a storm. It was a bad storm. Over a foot of rain fell, and several of our schools took significant damage. All of that damage has been repaired to the point of being mitigated. There's still repairs that will need to take place next summer, but now each of those spaces are, are back together where we have students that can be learning in those spaces, and those spaces are also safe. At Rittner Middle School, we still need to do several projects that include carpet replacement and hall tile replacement. At Island, the cafeteria floor will need to still be replaced. There were four classrooms that were damaged there, and that's been taken care of. Husky Support Center, there was flooding in the basement, and it damaged tile in the basement that is asbestos, and so we are in the process of removing that asbestos floor tile now. At the high school, the orchestra room took some water damage. There's some repairs to that floor that will need to be made. And then early childhood, also a floor repair in the hallways in that space. One thing that we also have done, and have just wrapped up, you know that the art room, one of the art rooms at the high school has, has been renovated. We added an art studio and to Mr. Kennedy's room. He is back into his classroom. He's still working on setting up that new space, and so I don't have any pictures for after just yet, but as soon as Mr. Kennedy gets that up and running, I'm excited to show you how he will be using that space as well. At Marvin, there is floor replacement, tile replacement that will need to happen, and that will also include a large asbestos abatement project to go along with that. Most of the classrooms that were flooded have asbestos tile underneath the vinyl tile, and therefore in order to repair the, replace the vinyl tile, the asbestos tile has to also be removed. So I just wanted to give you an update just on how things have been going. Of course, you know, the two big things we have coming up, we have the fitness center that we have been working very, very hard on getting documents together. That is ready to be sent out for bid. We're very excited about that. I think we have a nice plan. Dwight has shared information with all of you of what we expect it to look like, and then of course to go along with that are going to be improvements to the high school cafeteria, which we're also looking very forward to. If there are any questions or...
I'm curious about the storm damage. Was that covered by flood insurance?
All of that was covered by insurance, everything. Including item replacement, a lot of items were lost as well.
I try and drive around to every one of our schools at night. A lot of times, Farrah and I will have to ride to the daytime. She likes driving in the car, and I like looking at our buildings, and I tell you what, I just love how great the parking lots are lit up. I drive by our high school every morning about 6:30 in the morning, and I tell you what, that place is just shining like a diamond, with all the lights up there and everything. It is, it is, if you haven't seen it, you need to just drive by it. Drive by the front of our high school and look at that, because with the lights up there, it's, it's just great.
I love the colors. I love the colors, all the gold and jewelry wear and the different...
You go by, you go by, hey, can I mention it to Mike? That, that is a criticism, but even with two, two parking lot lights out up there, it's, you, you could read a book anywhere in parking lots, and that, that tells me we're keeping people safe out, when they go to their car, they, they leave from their car to go inside in the early mornings and stuff. Is there a staff showing up there before 6:30 when I go by? And it's great to know that they're, they're in a good lit parking lot.
Agreed.
Crats is awesome. I mean, every one of our schools is so well-lit now. I really appreciate the work you've done.
I do have a few questions. I'm talking a lot tonight, please excuse me.
Keep doing it. Keep going.
I see you mentioned the Moore Field. There's an Ole Missing up here.
The U is missing. Yes, yes, so I don't know, somebody must have really chucked a football pretty hard at that thing.
They did some.
Yeah, so that's on order.
Okay, and then, there's, there's trash on the parking lot at the high school. I'm not sure if that's a part of the maintenance of the, upkeeping of the parking lot or not. There's specifically a McDonald's coffee cup that is sitting on the light pole. I see it every morning in my apartment, so I'm not too sure if that's part of that. And then you mentioned the carpet in the high school and the orchestra room. There is water damage upstairs in front of the library from when it was leaking through the ceiling. That carpet is damaged.
Yeah, I have a professional carpet cleaner coming to, to, to get that taken care of, and they're supposed to be calling me this week to get that scheduled.
Sounds good.
I do appreciate the before and after pictures. Has this been shared with the community specifically? I know you said we do some marketing and I've seen some signs, but I mean, this is something like a particularity just on our website so people can see what's going on?
Yeah, now these specific pictures, I wanted to present it to you first, but I do on the facilities page, I have before and after pictures of many of the projects that we've done, so these will be uploaded to the facilities page for the before and after.
Is there a way we can make that a little bit more visual? I don't know how many people go to the facilities page to see some of the work that the district dollars are going towards, but it's more visual.
Yeah, I can definitely work with them to see what you're doing.
I don't know, Lisa, that's, that's one of my most favorite webpages to look at.
Well, I'm thinking about like the culinary lab. I think about like when my daughter took culinary, that was one of the things, and I'm like, oh, well, if it looked like that, man, you know, somebody got a better grade in. Somebody would have gone.
I wouldn't have burned that cake.
Yeah, so those types of things, but yeah. Appreciate the work.
Yeah, it's amazing work.
And that is a really good point, though. Like, if we kind of put a new advertisement out there that says, you know, this is what prop and everything that we've been doing, and kind of send those updates out with these pictures, I think that is another way to get out to the community, too.
I mean, that could be his own landing page, like, where, like, what's been done or whatever, and you click on that.
How far that progress, yeah.
Yeah, and then it just easily shows you all the different things.
Yep. Something to be really proud of.
I want to be careful, though, that we're not spending, doing too much on the website pages and the Facebook page and that, just in the fact that we have a lot of older community also that do not have access to that, so as we're looking at trying to get that information out, what are the ways Kimmy can do that?
And they vote.
Right, they're the ones that are voting, and they're, they're the ones that need to see that where their voting went to.
We vote.
Right.
Put a news paper and stuff.
Is there a way we can push it out to a local length, possibly?
Absolutely, and there's plans for the March Rittner News to have the center spread to be all propositioned, that's...
Oh, that's very good.
We're still going to get November edition, so...
It'll be our secret.
We won't tell you that.
Anybody have any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for our...
Thank you, sir.
Moving to 3.07, personnel recommendations, Dr. Michael Chance.
Evening, board members.
Good evening.
Here to present items one through 43 for your consideration. If there are any questions or comments, do they have a call up mystery?
Number two. I was just actually talking to somebody who was craving.
Yeah. Someone made him an offer he couldn't retrieve, so...
Well, I hear a big thank you is to him. Were we aware of number seven? That was going to be a problem?
Yeah, it's been discussed for quite a while, anticipated.
So will this allow us to go ahead and post for that, or how does that work as far as the timing of the postings?
We hope to post it tomorrow and hope to be back by December with a recommendation to do, is our goal.
So when we see these resignations or retirements here, is that always at the end of the school year unless it says otherwise, or...
So it's, so it's the date of separation would be, it'll tell you if it is the end of the school year or earlier.
All right.
So you'll see it is ranging from tomorrow, today, and even prior.
These things are so different.
And then at times, you'll see, for example, number 10, someone that actually stopped working quite a while ago, but we didn't have confirmation until after the temperature meetings or anything like that.
I'm curious, positions like six and 12, do you have subs that go in those positions?
Yeah, we work pretty closely with Maxim to provide support as soon as possible, so we've been able to identify people to fill those roles, and then at times, we do have agreements with them that those individuals are a quality, that we have an opportunity to offer them positions with us. And we do have an additional person in that position that we have the ability to do some floating around and covering. Not ideal, but...
I was like...
Mike, one question. Nineteen and twenty are channel changes, thus they're going from bachelor to master to master plus thirty or something like that. Just a thought, I didn't know where we landed on this. Did we increase or have plans to increase the amount of tuition that we reimburse them for pay for when they go for an advanced degree?
We had increased that fairly recently, I believe it was two years ago, increased that from 100 to 300 per credit hour, and for our support staff who are taking teacher certification, it's up to 450 per credit hour to help them move into a teaching role. We have a few taking advantage of that. At the time that we recommended going from the 100 to 300, we were making it, we were comparing it to the cost of a graduate course at Hmsol is what we were basing on, and what's consistent in reason, but we continue to monitor.
I think we need to revisit that at some point here.
To, to increase again?
Yes. I mean, we look at the cost, and I'm not, I'm not saying I agree with how much the cost of tuition is or anything like that, but to look at helping our teachers out when they're looking to get an advanced degree, I think we need to look at the cost of tuition and how much we can help them out with it.
Is that ever included, or is it just tuition itself?
It's just tuition.
I mean, sometimes a book's, a book, your books are $300 a book.
Is it three? You said it's 350 per credit?
It's 300 per credit, so 900 per class, and you get some 3 credit hour credits.
At least I'd like to see where we landed on it. Madam President, I move that we accept the recommendations, one through 21, as presented.
Forty-three.
Forty-three?
Forty.
Sorry, forty-three. As presented.
Second? Second, Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lotus?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Glover Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Ms. Enrique Pembot?
Yes.
And I am, so both, yes.
Thank you, board members.
Motion to adjourn, please. Thank you. Now, it's not using my computer anymore. Board member comments?
So this got thrown at me. I gotta take this home to one of the PTO people. October 25th is Freddie's donate night. So for the Rittner High School PTO, October 25th, 4 through 4 to 8 o'clock.
Oh, the North Plus Plaza Square Crossing.
Do you have an extra one that I can take from my office?
Do you have to have the flyer?
I think you can find it online and you can just take that online. But I think they were going to use some of these to, but I'll give it to you to put up at your office.
I'm taking my flyer.
Does anybody else have anything to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to share that, so I have been in a committee with a few other teachers and the amazing Martha Fignones over at the IWC was chairing it. And I was her co-chair for the Hispanic Heritage Festival. Due to some circumstances and just how feeling right now, we thought it would be best to postpone it, so I just wanted to let them know that we're going to be postponing that. So we're working on a longer timeline, so something for next year. So we'll do some more world organizing with community members as well because we really wanted to make this like really impactful and powerful for the community. So have vendors from the community, have parents, you know, come, students, have like a talent show of sorts. So we're really excited for what it's going to be, but we're going to do that next year. Just wanted to let them know.
That sounds exciting.
Yeah.
Mister?
As, I guess as everybody knows, I work at Rankin, I teach at Rankin Trade School and Technical College. Today, we had a, over 525 companies there for a career day. So they match themselves with the students in all the different programs that we have. That turns out to be on average about three students per company. Okay, there's an overwhelming amount of need in industry for workers, for skilled labor. We should consider looking at that instead of just saying going to college. Say going to college to do something, going to college, learn trade, learn skill. I mean, some of my students are making 60, $80,000 without a minute of experience. They do have an open house on the 22nd. We should post that somewhere and say, you know, go down there and see what it's all about. You know, we're talking a two-year program, investment of less than $30,000 for your tuition and everything. And you could walk out there with a heckling career.
How long is it on the 22nd?
From 8 o'clock to 2 o'clock.
So anyway, we could get kids signed up and maybe get a bus for them down there?
We just had a group that went down to Rankin.
Oh, okay.
And I'm happy to report that, I'll forward this and put it in the Friday memo to the group tomorrow. High school students participated in the manufacturing day that was at Rankin on October 7. Ms. Voder shared with me a picture of the students, and I'll put this in the Friday memo. We had north of 20 Rittner High students that were down for manufacturing day.
We had over 400 students there.
Great. That's great. So I'll put that in the Friday memo as we expand our partnership.
Things happening in our community, the Knights of Columbus. If you guys love barbecue, on the second Saturday of every month up here on Lacken Road, they barbecue. There's all kinds of good things to eat. It's a fundraiser for them. I love it. That's why I bring it up. You're always invited to join the Lions Club. If anyone wants to join the Lions Club of Overland, please let me know. It's a good outreach for our community. We talked about reaching out to people in the community, going to different venues. Well, here's a venue I don't know if you want to go to or not. I'll bring that up, too. Overland has a cleanup day this Saturday. If you go up to Legion Park, which is behind the VFW there on Midland, they're going to have, they have four large 40-yard dumpsters. The people are going to bring things up to it. I know they will fill those up. That means there's going to be a lot of people up there. It's a good way of meeting people on a very casual basis. I don't know the times. You can look all the signs up and down Midland. They're posted there. But I would say, you know, bulk of the day from probably 9:00 to 1:02, if you want to go up there. And then the last thing I have is if you look in the local light, the last month and the coming month, you'll see that I've started putting a column in there or an ad or whatever you want to call it. And I titled it, "Do You Know?", and it's things about Rittner. Okay? It was in there the last month. Bill Weisler and I worked on it to get where it's good. Reeve, you'll see the next one coming up. He and I just worked on that Tuesday. And I plan on putting that in every local light moving forward. So if anyone has any ideas, I'm open to it. It's not exclusive to mine. If someone wants to share in that, put something in there. If you know something I don't, which I'm sure everyone does, feel free to let me know what it is. We can work that in there as well. Doug has been a great help in giving me some of the base information on that. I really appreciate that. And yeah, it's another way of putting out to the people that don't do the electronics, a way to read the local light. Those local light, like the Rittner News, goes to every household in the Rittner community. And they are the ones that usually vote the most. And that's all I have.
No, wonderful ideas. Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Yes.
Mister?
We have senior night tomorrow for our football team. It's our last football game for seniors. Our Husky will be featured.
You guys just tell the kids.
I will look forward to seeing you all there. And then Mrs. Hill, she wanted to gather a committee of students for the food service feedback. We have 11, oh, make that 12. We just got one. Club students who are interested so far. I sent out an email to all club sponsors, club activity sponsors, to see if there are any more students who are interested. So we look forward to, looking forward for it.
On the senior night for football, does it include the band and the cheerleaders?
Yes.
And dancers, too?
Yes.
Okay, so it's everybody?
Yes.
It's going to be a big night.
It's going to be a great night.
Absolutely. Anybody else? All good? Wonderful. Then we will move to the consent agenda. A motion to approve consent agenda items 4.01 through 4.09.
Second?
Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Slonis?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Glover-Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
She.
Ms. Enriquez Pampa?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Moving to closed session, 5.01. We are going to reconvene and close the session for state statute 610021.
So who?
Second? Dr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mrs. Onis?
Yes.
Mr. Garden?
Yes.
Ms. Glover-Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez Pampa?
Yes.